Thank you, Nick. Okay, so let's get to the recognition portion of the night. So this past March, DECA co-advisors Dave Feely and Chris Manila worked with students on role-play competition. At state competition, it's made up of either every student working on a role-play. In addition, they can choose to participate in a written event. I am pleased to announce that we had three students placed in the top 10 for their role-play competitive events at the state competition. Those students are Megan Bizadis. She placed in the top 10 in her automotive services event. Next, we had Max Morton and Nico Werthe Meyer, who is not here tonight. They placed in the top 10 in their hospitality and tourism team decision-making event. I had the pleasure of working with 25 students individually on a 10- to 20-page marketing research paper in various categories. It is my pleasure to notify you that of those 25 students, all 25 placed in the top 10. In addition, 24 of those 25 placed in the top 3, earning the opportunity to compete at the international competition. This past April, ETHS DECA sent 22 students to an international career development conference held in Orlando, Florida. This conference hosted over 20,000 high school students from all over the United States, Spain, Guam, Canada, Puerto Rico, Mexico, and Japan. I would like to congratulate Darius Johnson, who placed top 10 at the state competition this past March. His event focused in on an entrepreneurship innovation plan development where he created a mobile application to help ease the college application process. His event was probably one of the toughest ones I've seen at the state competition. Darius, did you raise your hand? Yeah, there we go. He was a single competitor in there, and there was over 68, about 68 to 73 competitors in his event. So placing in the top 10 was huge. So congratulations to you, Darius. The following individuals qualified for the international competition in their written event. Nick Parafell and Sophie Parafell. They took first place in buying and merchandising business operations focusing in on the corporate social responsibility of Vineyard Vines. It's with great sadness that we say goodbye to Nick this year. Nick was an international competitor, as I mentioned previously, for all four years, and it's just been a pleasure to watch him grow and develop over the past four years. Next, we have Tamara Guy and Mika Parisian. They took first place in a community service project focusing in on creating care kits for connections for the homeless. Tamara and Mika earned competency, which they're receiving right now, at the international competition, earning at least an 80% on their presentation and written portions at the international competition. Next, we have Lila Garfield, who placed second at the state competition in her creative marketing plan focusing in on Sea Ranch. Lila earned competency at the international competition, earning at least an 80% on her presentation and written portion as well. Owen Goldsmith and Will O'Brien earned first place at the state competition in their creative marketing plan focusing in on Edzo's Burger Shop. Katie Holland and Nancy McGuire took first place in their finance operations research event focusing in on the corporate social responsibility for Chase Bank located in Evanston. Katie and Nancy earned competency at the international competition, earning at least 80% in their presentation and written portions. Nate Landall and Michael Schroeder earned first place at the state competition for franchise of business plan focusing on purchasing franchise rights for North Shore Acupunctur. Nate and Michael earned competency at the international competition, earning at least 80% in their presentation and written portions. Emily Ho and Anna Toffin took first place in their hospitality and tourism operations research event focusing in on the corporate social responsibility for Benison's Bakery. Connor Falls and Max Morton took first place in their independent business plan focusing in on creating their own business named Brain Food that allows working parents to work in a place where their children can take educational classes while the parents get work done and enjoy a healthy meal. Genevieve Fleming and Ellie Gablick took third place in their independent business plan focusing in on creating their own business, Redesign Your Style, that allows customers to take a style quiz and submit a piece of their furniture or clothing that they no longer are interested in to be redesigned to fit their new style. Genevieve and Ellie earned competency at the international competition, earning at least an 80% in their presentation and written portions. Megan Bizadis took first place at the state competition focusing in on her international business plan, which was the development of a business called Olive the Oil based out of Greece. Megan developed a business plan where individuals can purchase authentic olive oil fresh from the olive trees from her family's olive tree farm in Greece. Megan earned competency at the international competition, earning at least 80% on her written and oral presentation. Kira Imran earned first place in her public relations project focusing in on creating awareness and educating students on the Muslim educational center and what it has to offer. Kira earned competency at the international competition, earning at least an 80% on her presentation and written portion. Joey Savitas and McKenna Hersh Arnett earned first place in their sports and entertainment operations research event focusing in on the social corporate responsibility for quad indoor sports. David Hodges and Ethan Wernikoff earned third place for the development of their own locally-sourced grocery store, Evanston Seasons. This store features seasonal foods, all from farm and produce areas around Evanston and Chicago areas. Ethan and David earned competency at the international competition, earning at least an 80% in their presentation and written portions. Maya Moscow earned second place at franchise of business plan, that was her event, focusing in on purchasing franchise rights for Firehouse Grill. Maya had quite successful competition, earning not only competency but top 20, as well as top 10 in her category at the international competition. Maya competed in the final round, being the only single entry, while others had one or two partners presenting in that final round. Congratulations to them. On a final note, I would like to thank my co-advisors Dave Feely and Chris Manila, as well as the support of my department head, Shelley Gates. In addition, thank you for allowing us to run DECA here at ETHS. The opportunities, as well as the experiences, that these students get from these competitions and the conferences are just truly amazing. This year's DECA slogan was "Ready For It," and ETHS definitely was. As a token of our appreciation, Megan's going to go ahead and hand out each board member an Illinois DECA trading pen. Each state comes to the international competition and trades their state pens with each other as a way to begin to develop their networking skills. Our state pen has Abraham Lincoln on it with a lightsaber to celebrate Star Wars Land opening in August in Disney and the monorail, which is the signature Disney transportation. In addition, you will notice the Slinky Dog ride, which represents the new Toy Storyland that opened in August, and we cannot forget the Transformer, which represents Universal Studios. So thank you again so much for your support.
Thank you. Don't sit down. So we want to invite all of you to come around the inside of the horseshoe and shake hands with all the school board members. We have an exchange for the lovely gift you gave us, an ETHS pin, which is not all colorful. But Nick, if you've been here four years, you're like becoming a four-star general. You get one of these every year that you come, and it is a memento that you were indeed honored by the school board. So please, come around so we can congratulate you, and thank you for the pin that you gave us.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Great job. That was really nice.
Congratulations.
Good luck to you.
Good luck.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Wow.
Congratulations.
Good job.
David.
Oh, my gosh.
Just wonderful.
Be sure they get them.
They may become six or seven.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you might let them know just to give an excuse to them that you don't need to stay there.
Yes.
Thank you so much. That's a great way to start our meeting. And even though you are welcome to stay, we would understand if you just would want to leave.
Going home to do homework, of course.
Going home to do homework, right. It really is a great way to start a meeting. Thank you all. Thank you all, parents who came to support. It's wonderful. All right. So our next item on the agenda is our one-to-one digital learning update.
Well, I see we have David Chan and Mina Marion here. It looks like we have a couple of our glowing students as well to assist with this. Board, as you know, you have had presentations in the past on our one-to-one digital learning, and somehow, every year, the presentation just seems to dazzle with something more. So I'd like to invite all of you up to the table, and we look forward to hearing this report tonight.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Good evening. Thank you for having us again. We're going to get started here. So my name's David Chan. I'm the Director of Instructional Technology here at Evanston Township High School. And to my left is...
I'm Mina Marion, one of the Technology Integration Specialists.
And also on our team, who couldn't be here tonight, but is Ms. Bollinger, who's our Student Tech Support Center Coordinator, the Chrome Zone Coordinator. Ms. Petros, who's our Support Specialist Trainer. She actually works on two different teams in our department, which is very versatile. And then our newest member for our team, she replaced Alia Ibrahim, who, again, beloved, we miss her. But Melanie Ilzman, she's a Technology Integration Specialist. She comes from the Science Department, so close to my heart. And she also added a lot this year so far to our STEAM initiatives, to experience in the planetarium. She's also brought a seismometer to ETHS. So she literally put us on a map, right? So that's a map of all the seismometers in the United States. And there's one in the basement right now. It's giving live data. She set up this streaming app so that in the classroom, they can see the feed. There was an earthquake earlier, unfortunately, but...
Not today.
Not today, yes. December, when we first got it set up. And they were seeing it live, and it was very interesting. And it's so interesting that the name, Evanston, Illinois, apparently, is the coolest name, is evil. So, yeah, on a map. Anyway. All right. So, yes, briefly, our one-to-one update. So this is our fifth year of our full one-to-one program. We did introduce a new model Chromebook this year, the Acer C771. This is our second group, the class of 2019, our second group of students to receive their devices as ninth graders and to progress all the way through to graduation. So we're very proud of that. It's proven to be a sustainable program, a program that we want to continue. And before, when we started giving these presentations, about five, six years ago now, we were doing more about what are the devices, what are the procedures, the protocols, the rules, the regulations. And for the past few years, though, we've been able to focus more on the end-users, our students and staff, and the amazing things that they are doing with their devices, with their access to technology. And we get to showcase that here. So that's, thank you, Dr. Widdespoon, for pointing it out. We're excited to share some updates this year. And this will be the last time I talk about the device. We're going to talk about all the amazing things that we've done because of this access. So everything that follows is a result of that. As my Uncle Ben said, if you're a Spider-Man fan, "With great power comes great responsibility." And we recognize that. When we give a device to every student coming as a freshman, there needs to be some sense of what does that mean, to have unlimited access to information? So this year, we started an ambitious project on digital citizenship. And something we've been talking about, we've been working with teachers and staff members throughout the building ever since from day one of our program. But this year, we made the concerted effort to really dig in and get involved with our freshmen through our freshman advisory study hall, FASH. And we implemented a series of five lessons that were spread throughout the year. We included a pre-test and a post-test. And we also added a component where they created their own portfolio, which Ms. Marion will talk about a little bit more as well. And some early stats, again, of those that completed both the pre and the post-test, 90% did better on the post-test. So we feel like we're making a small difference there, and we've got a lot of room to grow for the future years. So that's our program called Digital Citizenship.
Another thing that we were able to do because of having these Chromebooks in class was host, I think, our fifth or sixth year of the Hour of Code, the first week of December. We celebrated it with events throughout the week. We had a guest speaker, who was a programmer, come in and actually take kids through a hands-on tutorial where they were able to make their own app that was an eight ball. It's one of the images on the screen there, where kids were actually programming their phones, right? We know that they have an affinity for those devices, and they were able to really kind of harness that in this session and learn more about how that really works behind the scenes. We also actually did the Real Hour of Code, which is a website that provides different activities for students of varying levels, and students were able to engage in that. This year, we had over 1,400 students complete the Hour of Code. That's more than 400, 500 more than last year. And they got to do it in various places throughout the school. I remember, we first started this, we had them signing up for labs, right, coming to us. And this time, we could go to them, or they could do it anywhere they wanted to, and again, because they all have devices. And then we kind of kicked off or finished off the event with a tech expo, where people from both inside the school and outside the school were able to kind of show off how technology makes a difference in their lives in an interesting ways. In the image I have up there on the screen, we had the STC Maker Space showing off a drone, as well as how to play a piano using water with your fingers that's programmed in wires that I can't explain really to you at the moment, but that was very cool for the kids to play with and kind of interact with firsthand. So that was a success and built on from previous years. So we look forward to doing that again next year.
For the past few years, we've had access to about 15 hotspots, mobile hotspots. This is access to internet through just a small device, through the Evanston Public Library. But I'm pleased to report, in January, we expanded this program by adding 50, 5-0, dedicated hotspots for use exclusively by ETHS students. So no library card needed, longer checkout time, so they could check out for an entire quarter, renew it if there's not a waiting list. There's a simple form. We still require a confirmation call with a parent guardian, so we know we have approval. But we were able to do this because we applied for and received a grant subsidy through T-Mobile's Empower Ed program. So we received subsidies towards the purchase of the device and then a very low cost or reduced rate for the data plans. So we're going to keep an eye on this. Since we started, that was in January, we've checked out over half of the hotspots. And really, we're just continuing to identify who the families and students that are in need among advertising, getting the word out and spreading the word, so that we can, again, try to close or achieve internet access for all.
This year, we also held our first e-learning day at ETHS, or I guess not at ETHS, right, outside of ETHS. And that day was on February 22. It was supposed to be a non-attendance day after conferences, and we identified that as a possible day to try out e-learning, which has been something that other schools have been piloting for the last couple of years. We did that by forming a committee and working together to kind of put the word out to faculty, to staff, to families, and children, and students about, you know, how this day would work. We kind of focused on three main areas, taking attendance, making it really clear how students could be marked present for the day, focused with the teachers with a lot of professional development around how to create meaningful digital assignments, so that students weren't just doing busy work, they were actually extending their learning as similar to what they'd be doing in the classroom as possible. And then talking to staff about the availability, what their expectations were for being present online that day. And we had relative, we think, success with this. We got a lot of great feedback, and we were able to survey many different stakeholders. And we put out three different surveys for that. And we've came with a lot of information, and we have a lot of, you know, details on that. But our biggest takeaway was that a majority of people preferred the e-learning day to having an added school day. There was a lot of, like I said, detailed feedback in these reports, and many of them focused on, you know, the timing of the day. In this case, you know, the interesting point was that it was supposed to be a day off that families had already scheduled. So of course, some families were out of town, some students were on field trips. And those are things that were that way because of the circumstance. However, in the future, if we were able to call an e-day on the day of a cold day or a snow day, there was a lot of favor in doing that, because people would be stuck inside anyway, right? They wouldn't necessarily be on field trips or be visiting colleges, as some students were inevitably during the first one. And many people said that that's something that they would definitely be in favor of. So we felt it was a success, and we were continuing to work with the leadership team on kind of fleshing out how this might look in the future. We also spent, like David mentioned, a majority of our time thinking of ways that these devices are really making student work possible and pushing student work to be more meaningful and authentic. We continued this year doing portfolios, as David mentioned, with the digital citizenship curriculum. We are looking to try to get students to make portfolios as part of their digital citizenship curriculum that would start freshman year through freshman advisory study hall. However, this year, because that is sort of nascent, we were able to do this with the sophomores. And the sophomores added to their written portfolios different sections for each year as opposed to just for sophomore year. And they were able to add sections to their portfolio that weren't just about English. So we expanded the portfolio this year and gave them the opportunity to show off their learning in other areas that were not just their writing. Additional work involves websites. I mean, websites have been, we've seen, a very dynamic platform for students to show their learning. You know, I found four examples here of students, you know, looking at things that they care about, having a lot of choice in the research that they're doing, and making their learning really meaningful to themselves while still acquiring the skills that their teachers would like them to learn. All four of these are Google websites that teachers have worked with us to plan and teach in the classroom. And, you know, we're very fortunate to have two tech specialists that allow us to go in the classrooms, work with the kids, so that we take a lot of the burden off the teacher for knowing the technology and still having an expert in the room to help them, so that that goes rather seamlessly and the teacher can focus on the instruction. So we've seen a rise in websites of all different types that make it a very dynamic platform. Video is a very popular trend. I think we talked about it last year as well. Whiteboarding is a topic that we've been doing for a few years now. It sort of started in geoscience. Melanie Ilzman, David discussed, was actually one of the first teachers here at ETHS that did it with her classes. And it's sort of caught on and grown from there. We've seen it in physics, in math, in civics. And this example, both of these are from a class, a resource class, where the students were breaking apart the Catcher in the Rye in different chapters, and each student was animating one, and then they were able to string them together, so they had a little video. I guess there used to be a video on YouTube like that that got taken down, so they said, "Well, let's just recreate it ourselves." And so the students were able to do that here. So these are just little examples of that.
And they put them all together.
To make the Catcher in the Rye, yeah, each chapter. And then, oh, we did it in an incognito mode. That's okay. We weren't going to play the videos for time's sake anyway, but the kind of culminating piece is that we've had students using WeVideo to do a lot of video editing. We've seen everything from documentary films, and I had just a screenshot of one there that was a documentary film about, for senior studies, about activism in seniors. It was a play on seniors, because it wasn't like high school seniors, it was like over 65 seniors. And so we've had students using that to do documentaries. And then, as well as students who are doing commercials for different classes, another example was for like designing a cruise line, a commercial for finance to figure out, you know, if we had this much money, how would we market this? And very similar, it was actually for Jenny Weber's class, similar to what they were talking about with DECA, where students had to kind of do a sales pitch, and they were then able to use video to be a part of that. So we're seeing it across the curriculum, enriching, again, the kids' learning in a way that is more dynamic and more personalized to them.
So last year, I was, I had the luxury of sharing ETHS Bell, which is a Chrome extension that was developed by a student. And this beloved Chrome extension is now pushed out on every single student Chromebook here at ETHS, staff Chromebook, any Chrome browser, to be honest. And really, the best part is solving a real-world problem, and it was made by a student. So we were informed, those of us that know, that the ETHS Bell celebrated its 1,000,000th click just a few weeks ago. All right? We celebrated that. And this year, I am pleased that its developer, along with another rising star developer, are able to share a little bit more about how this project spawned additional work and a whole new club. So I'm going to turn it over to Oliver Leopold and Albert Portnoy.
Thank you. So before we jump in, I just want to talk about, we started a club called Code ETHS, and our first product, project was changing the PE locations board. Thank you. So the team for our first project, Mr. Chan, who is our sponsor of the club, I'm a sophomore. I founded that Bell extension and this club. Next to me is Albert Portnoy. He was the lead developer for this project, and numerous students who have joined this club and given feedback and helped with design, and a ton of support throughout the way.
All right. So as Oliver mentioned, for our first project, we revamped the PE location board. On the screen, you can see, this is our first iteration. It was physical, and it wasn't that convenient, because you'd have to, the teachers would have to go in and manually change your locations every time if they had multiple classes, the different locations, all that.
Just for clarification, you didn't make that. That was made.
That was already there.
We suspect 1883 was when that happened.
Yes. It's a guess, give or take.
Yep. So this is the version 2. This was made at the beginning of the 2018-2019 school year. It's pretty basic, and it gets the job done better, but it's still a bit cluttered. So this year, we took matters into our own hands, and Code ETHS founded version 3.0.
So just last month, we announced this new PE board, which started in the PE wing and right by entrance 3. It shows how much time is left in the period, easy-to-use icons, there's just a nice uniform look to everything. Willie the Wild kit is, of course, on there. It shows when the locker room closes, so there's less confusion. And students can check the schedule from their phone or Chromebook at any point in the day. So I know some people never walked by that board, so they would have to reroute themselves. So now they can check it from their phone or Chromebook. So it helps everyone in the building. It helps our students, our teachers, and our administrators. As I said, students can check from their phone, it's easier to look at, and there are fewer confusions about where to go throughout the day. Teachers can make last-minute updates, the previous board updated every five minutes, where this one updates every about 15 seconds. Students will arrive faster to class, and everything is easy to manage for teachers. And administrators, if they're looking for a specific staff or student who's in PE, they can check this from their computer without having to call someone or go looking around the 20 different gyms that we have here.
I just have to add, the PE teachers brag and brag and brag about this, but I also know the students just are in love with it. I mean, you can't believe what this has done to change life at ETHS.
So...
Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
As we were saying, this is also very easy on the teachers. It's three steps. They open the spreadsheet, put in their locations, and check any applicable boxes for uniform, shirt, heart rate monitor, or Chromebook, whichever's necessary.
So, yeah, they just have to open the spreadsheet, similar to the one they were using before. They find their row. For each period, they just enter their location. It'll, as they start typing in weight, it'll pop up with weight room, because each teacher has a slightly different way of typing weight room with capitalization and spaces, so it'll fill it for them. Then they can check and indicate to their students if they do not need to dress for the day, if they need a heart rate monitor or a Chromebook. And then in just 15 seconds, that's automatically populated onto the board. Everything looks nice, and they have very little to do.
So this is our, this was our process of making this. And so we first brainstormed the idea, Mr. Chan helped us with that. From then, we designed how we would want it to look. We discussed it with the PE department to see if they had any feedback. Then we actually created it, and we presented it to the department. This is over a few months. And then it's now active, and we call this the Process of Innovation.
Yeah, so the project gave us a real understanding, everyone on the team, how we can approach future projects in the real world and in our next few years at ETHS. The team was able to figure out how to navigate through different departments and get things done while satisfying everyone, the students, the teachers, the administrators. And we're super excited to work on more projects in the coming years as a part of this new Code ETHS club, bringing in people who maybe know how to code or don't know how to code, have ideas, you know, want to get things integrated, just like to design things, all sorts of people. And we're really glad that ETHS has really given us a platform to innovate in the real world while we're still in high school. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Obviously, super proud of the work that Oliver and Albert, and really, the entire team. There were several others that are part of this group. And as they mentioned, what's coming out is, you know, they take the ideas, the suggestions of themselves, but adults that have real problems, like literally, the PE department came to me, asked like, "Hey, what can we do about this?" And then we talked about it, and they came up with solutions, presented, just going through this process of iteration, all while taking a full class load and however much other stuff you guys do, I know. Then we actually created it and we presented it to the department. This is over a few months. And then it's now active and we call this the process of innovation.
Yeah, so the project gave us a real understanding, everyone on the team, how we can approach future projects in the real world and in our next few years at ETHS. The team was able to figure out how to navigate through different departments and get things done while satisfying everyone, the students, the teachers, the administrators. And we're super excited to work on more projects in the coming years as a part of this new Code ETHS club, bringing in people who maybe know how to code or don't know how to code, have ideas, you know, want to get things integrated, just like to design things, all sorts of people. And we're really glad that ETHS has really given us a platform to innovate in the real world while we're still in high school. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Obviously, super proud of the work that Oliver and Albert and, and really the entire team. There were, there were several others that are, are part of this group. And, and as they've mentioned, what's coming out is, you know, they, they take the ideas, the suggestions of themselves, but adults that have real problems, like literally the PE department came to me and asked like, hey, what can we do about this? And then we talked about it and they came up with solutions, presented, just going through this process of iteration, all while taking a full class load and, and however much other stuff you guys do, I know. So thank you again for taking the time to do all of that. And as, as they said, we're looking forward to additional projects to come. So what's next? We'll obviously continue with our one-to-one program initiative and we're looking at, one of the Code ETHS projects could be Kit Cash, maybe Kit Coin is the working title on that. So that, that could be in the works, right? We'll see you next year on that. Digital citizenship, just continuing version 2.0, working in the summer to really kind of streamline a couple of things, lessons learned during this first year pilot, really just making more guided access and, and just more achievable for our students coming in as freshmen. And then again, closing this homework app. So we talked about the mobile hotspots. We have an opportunity, I think, to, from, from the minute that our freshmen come in to identify who is in need of internet access. We're giving you the computer, we're giving you a Chromebook. What can we do to help you to make sure that you have access anytime, anywhere, including when you leave school? So we, we have a commitment to do that. We have support and we have collaborations, again, still with Evans Public Library, the city of Evanston, to really work on this and solve it and really state claim to the fact that we can, we can close this. So, yep.
And then going forward, we also will continue to present at conferences. Each year we have many teachers and staff members who do present. This past year we had ISTI in Chicago, the International Society for Technology and Education. And we were able to have myself, David and Sarah Young, thank you, Sarah Young, presented at that. And it's kind of a big deal to be at such a widespread conference, so we were proud to have people represent there. We have people presenting at Midwest Google Summit. David is a featured speaker there for years and years now. We did host Mini-Con, Nice Mini-Con, so Northern Illinois Computing Educators for the second year with about 300 people in attendance for that on a snowy Saturday in January. And then of course, the ICE Conference, we, we had many people attend that and presented it this year. And we look forward to continuing, involving teachers and staff in these professional development opportunities.
All right. And we like planning our own PD here in-house. So last summer we held a Google Certified Educator Boot Camp. We had 35 staff. We had it free for 202 and 65 and we had about 25 from both districts come in and we had 10 people from outside the district also come in to get certified. So they took a full day workshop with Ms. Marian, myself, a couple of our, other educators who are certified already and many of which got certified out of that day. They took a test that day to get certified or they took it later that week. And then this year we are going to host a summer symposium on teaching with technology, really focusing on, on really pedagogy, right? So inspiring, showing some great use case scenarios, some are, some of the work of our teachers here and at 265 perhaps, as well as some short bursts, little lessons, workshops, and then giving all of our attendees an opportunity to create something or modify a lesson plan and really work with us and coaches on how to do that. So that's, this summer's kind of a PD initiative. So with that, I think we're, we're going to pause. If there are any questions for any of us?
Wow. Pretty amazing. Thank you. Questions, Board?
Thank you. This is amazing. We were just awed by your presentation, so thank you so much. I was just curious if you could say just a teeny bit more about the digital citizenship. I thought that was really interesting and that late slide did have some more information, but kind of what's the big picture? What are you trying to accomplish there? And you mentioned it used to be in the freshman study hall, but then sophomore, kind of where does it live or through the four years?
Sure. So we actually, we have a video, we'll, we'll share it out so that you can see it. There's five parts. So we, we, we created five lessons and each lesson actually has subparts. So that's why we, we need to streamline a little bit. We were really ambitious. We wanted to just get all this stuff out there. It is housed in our freshman advisory study hall and that's where it actually will continue to be. Sophomores where we would talk about portfolios. So the five components are communication, etiquette, literacy, rights and responsibility, and security. And so for example, like security, how, how do you create a good password? How do you avoid email spam? Things like that. Lessons that our students may not be getting in their everyday curriculum, but are very important. And they take a pre-test prior to those lessons and then a post-test after that. And then they create a portfolio as one of their, their culminating steps in the, in the lessons. And this year it was very self-guided. So we, we worked with the FAS teachers to release a lesson, advertise it, share it out, and then we relied on students to complete it at their leisure. We think we want to have a little more structure next year to say this week, you know, kind of like on a deadline, you gotta do this. And we threw in a carrot. So with the Chromebooks for freshmen, they do not currently have access to what are called the Chrome Web, what is called the Chrome Web Store, which allows you to install various extensions. So we withheld that and then when you complete the curriculum, you actually get placed on a approved list, so to speak, to then get access to those extensions. Now there are extensions such as ETHS Bell that are required or, you know, definitely a need for students and we can put them on a list that, so that all students can have access to that. But we withhold the access to the wide world of extensions until they complete this curriculum.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Just a comment. So we absolutely, or I absolutely heard the entire presentation, but I'm wowed by, by your part in it. And, and so I, I just want to say how awesome this is that we are utilizing our students that use our systems the most to be innovative thinkers and come up with solutions when it affects them instead of adults thinking we know all the answers and we have all the answers. So I'm impressed. Oliver, is that your name?
Oliver and Albert.
Oliver and Al, and Oliver is a sophomore.
Yes.
Okay. Good job. Good job.
So we have plenty of time yet to take advantage of all this talent.
Right. And, oh.
I'm just looking forward to what's next.
How many, how many are in your, in your group, in your club?
We have about 10, 10 that come pretty regularly and are working on different things and different ideas and bringing so many different things to the table.
Yes. Well, you have, you've, you've shown us how, how creative you can be and, and I love the, the series of slides, the, the first bulletin board from 1883. And then the, the next busy looking one, which I thought, oh, that looks pretty good. And Albert said no. So it's, so I look forward to seeing what else you're going to bring to us.
Thank you. We're really excited.
Yeah, thank you.
Doing a great job.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So just like with the other students, we will understand if you choose not to stay and you want to go and create, right?
Thank you so much. Great job.
Yes, thank you. So our next item is the update on our public day school.
And Dr. Walls, Linay Walls will come up and I don't know if Jamie or Jim or Lauren or who else. Bring up the panel. I'll just give a little introduction because I, I know that they're going to explain the whole situation. But we are getting very close to the opening of our day school. And Board, as you know, we've brought this to you over a period of time, all the way from educationally conceptualizing it to then conceptualizing the facility to now bringing back to you the kind of, kind of a holistic picture of, of where we are on it and what looms very soon on the horizon. So I, I think I'll leave it at that. I don't want to steal your thunder, but I, it's a surprise to say, as excited as we are about the one-to-one digital, we also have that level of excitement about this day school and I, I think you'll agree after you see this presentation.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Linay Walls. I'm the Director of Special Education.
Good evening. I'm Jamie Reinhardt. I'm a special education teacher, instructional coach and the paraprofessional coordinator and I'll be the program director at the day school next year.
And I'm Jamie Wolczynski, a psychologist at ETHS.
And I'm Lauren McCardle. I'm the Assistant Director for Special Education.
We are excited to be here to give you an update on the day school. So I will read the mission. The day school embodies the mission of District 202. Embracing its diversity, ETHS is committed to educating all of its students to their maximum potential. Designed to improve students' academic, social, emotional and post-secondary outcomes, the school responds to the unique learning needs with specialized and direct instruction and individualized services and interventions. The day school provides a structured and supportive educational environment for Evanston students in the Evanston community. So educational environment, I'll just give an overview of who we serve currently for our students with IEPs. As a district, we have 453 students with IEPs. A little over 60% of those students spend the majority of their school day with general education peers. About 28 students attend our transition house. We have 26 of our high school students who attend Park School and we have an additional 49 students who attend public, private or residential schools outside the city of Evanston. The demographic breakdown by race and ethnicity for students with IEPs. ETHS's total enrollment, that N of 3,613 was taken from the opening school report from September. Our total enrollment is about 6% of students who identify as Asian. Of our 453 students with IEPs, 3% of those identify as Asian. And of our total number of students who currently attend off-campus programs, we have an N of 75 and 6% of those students identify as Asian. So that's how you read this chart. And you can go across and look at the other demographics. Breakdown by disability for students with IEPs. Of all of our students with IEPs, the majority of them are identified as students with specific learning disabilities. And of those students with specific learning disabilities, that N of 75, 11% of those students have specific learning disabilities. Followed by emotional disabilities, which make up almost 20% of our IEPs total, but almost 40% of the 75 students who are currently served in off-campus settings. Okay? Next is autism and they make up about 20% of those 75 students who are currently off-campus. Other health impairment, 13%. Intellectual disability makes up 18% of our students currently served off-campus with the majority of those students being served at Park School. And then that zero with the asterisk represents our students with multiple disabilities, of which we only have three, but I still wanted them captured. Stakeholder communication. As Dr. Witherspoon stated, this day school has been a longstanding vision of the district for many, many years. And so in 2017, or since 2017, there have been nine meetings with the city of Evanston. There's been one ward meeting. There have been individual meetings with communicate, uh, community organizations, pardon me. We hosted a neighborhood coffee here at ETHS and then I'll kick it down to Lauren to talk about the current contacts we've made.
Yeah, so since the beginning of the school year, we've continued our stakeholder communication with various groups. We have been a presence at multiple ETHS events, including incoming freshman night, parent information night and course selection night. We've also hosted a partner school articulation breakfast. This was in October. We invited all of our Supreme School partners to ETHS to talk more about the launch of the day school and to start the dialogue about how they could partner with us to determine appropriate candidates for the day school. We've also initiated off-campus parent communications for select families as appropriate. We've had even more targeted communication with individual families as we started scheduling IEP meetings for students who would be considered for the day school, as well as day school tours. So once we got the site up and running, as you all saw today, we were very excited to show it off for potential families as well as students. So those have been in the mix since about April, early April. With regard to programming, we'll start with staffing. We will have five teachers, one for each of the core content areas, English, social, social science, math, science, and then also PE. I will have three paraprofessionals, two student management personnel, one male and one female psychologist, a secretary, two psychologist practicum students and three school psychologist interns. Highlights of their experience include 60% of the staff having experience in alternative settings prior to being at ETHS. Also then multiple staff members do possess dual licensure and then additional credentials. In addition to the staff that will be at the day school, all of our students will continue to be connected to their grade level team that's available in the main building. So including their counselor, their dean, their social worker, as well as their grade level psychologist. So in terms of students for the day school, placement at the day school is determined through an IEP team decision, which is all driven by student needs. And so student present levels of functioning, goal areas listed in the IEP, accommodations needed, whatever their related services are, which are all prescribed by that IEP drive consideration for placement. As Dr. Walls mentioned, while a large segment of our students placed off-campus are eligible under the emotional disability category, students from other eligibility areas will be considered as well as appropriate. So for example, there might be a student who is eligible under the autism category who, who has needs that can be supported by our programming. So that student would be a consideration. For the start, for the launch of the day school, we're projected at approximately 20 students, but the staff to student ratio will never exceed five to one at the day school. Okay, with regard to academics, the courses that we offer will fulfill the graduation requirements and the curriculum will be parallel to the general education curriculum here at the school. And we do have two teachers who are internal transfers and they both have co-taught experience, whether they're currently co-teaching in the building or have previously co-taught. We'll also offer a physical education and that curriculum will be more based on our healthy lifestyles and fitness course that's focused on healthy decision-making, mindfulness practices, and then overall emotional well-being and physical fitness. Also, similar to numerous other day schools, we will be offering electives, including job skills, psychology, art, potentially contemporary adult life as well. So that would fulfill the consumer education requirement. And then we're also looking at vocational experiences, both within the day school as well as in the community. Most accessible at the day school would be potentially nutrition services, is something that we've talked about. And then for academic support and resources, within the day school building, we've built in AM and PM support within our daily schedule. Students will also be scheduled into study hall, resource classes, and then they'll also be meeting with their case manager regularly. And they'll also have access to the resources on the main campus, including the homework center, Wild Kid Academy, and as, as I had said before, the ETHS grade level team. With regard to resources, facilities such as like the track, the fieldhouse, the pool, any of the gyms can be scheduled. I've been in collaboration with the department chair, Marie Livatino, in the PE department, as well as science labs and then our east and central libraries, the Chrome Zone. And then students will work with them individually to depend, to define the need and then what support they would be able to have in accessing those supports. So with regard to social emotional learning, all of our programming is centered around the Illinois State Standards for Social Emotional Learning. And there are three main goals connected with these standards, helping students develop social emotional awareness and self-regulation skills, developing positive interpersonal relationships, as well as developing decision-making skills, not only for the school setting, but also in community settings. So all of our programming is driven by those goals and linked back to the emotional learning standards. With that, our system for teaching all of our behavioral and social emotional expectations within the day school is positive behavior interventions and supports, and we'll speak a little bit more on that in a little bit.
And all of our students will be receiving individual and group therapy at the day school. That's driven by their student IEP goals, their individual IEP goals. A little bit different than some of the other A little bit different than some of the other programs that have general groups, it's just group day, or a group that students are attending, we're going to be focusing our groups on targeted concerns that the students are having and group them accordingly, as opposed to a general group. Well, we'll have the social-emotional learning infused through all settings, so throughout all the classrooms as part of the PBIS initiative. And we're going to have a big focus on community building, where everyone feels that they're part of the school, they own part of the school, excuse me. And we're going to be having, for maybe a lack of a better term, sort of an initial check-in homeroom time at the beginning of the day for all the students to come in and check in, teachers to be able to check in with the students to make sure everybody's in a good place and ready to start the day, as opposed to everyone coming in, getting into a classroom, and the bell ringing and starting. So we'll be doing check-ins for, and community building activities at the start of each day.
We also have the, the capacity to provide supportive attendance interventions. Many of our students who are placed off-campus do struggle with regular attendance for a variety of reasons. Because we are situated in the community, we have the capacity to send staff out to homes, to do home visits, making more phone calls, inviting parents in for meetings, things of that nature to support attendance for our students. And then, lastly, on this particular slide, staff trainings that we have done to date and will continue in terms of building staff capacity. PBIS training, our team attended a two-day training through the Midwest PBIS Network in April. We are training with the Crisis Prevention Institute, which will focus on crisis prevention and intervention, emergency procedures, CPR training, and then ongoing equity, professional development aligned with the district and school goals. So with positive behavior supports and interventions, there are a couple of key components that, that we believe will really strongly support our students at the day school. There will be explicit teaching of all program expectations, repeated opportunities to practice demonstrating behavioral and social-emotional learning concepts, a system of positive reinforcements for students who do meet these expectations, and then also a continuum of supports within the building to address needs. So if students are struggling to engage in the classroom, we'll have a wide range of in-class, as well as out-of-class supports to help get them reset for the learning environment. And then, all staff will be trained in the implementation of PBIS practices, so we'll really create that unified and systematic approach for working with our students.
And we'll also be offering parent workshops on a variety of topics, whether it's generated by parent interest or needs that we see come up throughout this school year. We'll be partnering with our ETHS transition coordinator, Nicole Johnson, as well as state organizations to focus on post-high school planning. We're also, through that, exploring a variety of neighboring partnership opportunities, such as with Have Dreams, Pinino's Valley, places that are very near to the day school. And we've had students, current ETHS students as past, well, as past ETHS students involved with those businesses and such in the neighborhood. We'll be providing ongoing clinical consultation and family therapy partnerships. So if students and their families identify that they would like to engage in family therapy opportunities, we will offer that to them. We won't force anybody or require it, but if it's an interest in the family, we will offer that. And then, we're also looking at some potential partnerships involving art and music therapy as well.
So in terms of the process, as I had mentioned before, placement at the day school comes through an IEP team decision based on student need. And, and necessary members of that IEP team involve the parent and guardian, as well as the student. Our IEP meetings are already underway for students being considered. We do have several already identified and onboard for the summer session. Day school staff participate in IEP meetings for all students being considered, so that they can really speak to the programming. We have offered tours to all potential families, as well as individual meetings with parents outside of their IEP meeting, if there are further questions or they want to talk through anything related to the day school. So we're really taking a personalized and individualized approach in terms of, one, we're coming to families with this potential opportunity for their student.
Now let's take a look at the school. So this area is the reception area, that's where all, where you see the ETHS seal, that's where all the students will enter the building, and all visitors will enter there. And then, in that same space, you see the student's bay of lockers, and that's also where parents and visitors will wait for meetings. Next, you see two shots of our classrooms and our hallways, once you enter, so this is our equivalent of H-Hall at the day school, and, and our science classroom. These two shots show the multipurpose room and the open office, and the multipurpose room is where a PE will take place, it's also where lunch will take place. The open off, and the multipurpose room and the open office both can be used as processing spaces as well. We have about three or four flexible spaces within the day school that can really serve a variety of purposes, based on how we have them scheduled throughout the day. Here's our conference room, also with the ETH assignment. And then our entry and exit. At the entrance, where the clock is in the shot, that is where our secretary, secretarial staff and safety staff will sit while we are processing visitors. Otherwise, we are expecting our full complement of staff to be fully immersed in the total school programming throughout the day to the greatest extent possible. Here is our contact information, as you know, as Jamie introduced herself as a coordinator, and Jim as a psychologist, that's why we place them in a center, they are the day-to-day staff who will be responsible for the day school. Nicole Brooks, who is already on our team, she is transferring from the Special Education Department on campus to the day school, so she's taking already some skills and strengths with her in this new venture. And then, Dr. Lauren McGardle is the support administrator for the day school, and of course, I am the district administrator in charge of all of our programming. That is the ETHS day school. Thank you. Do you have any questions first?
There's a lot of information, thank you for all that information. I just want to, and I, I know the answer to this, but I think it's important because folks may want access to the PowerPoint. So it will be uploaded on our website?
Yes.
Tomorrow morning?
Yes.
By tomorrow morning, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I saw even a few board members trying to jot those numbers down, including myself, and then I remembered, because I can't write that down.
It is coming.
Yes. That's true. They could, they could help me. All right, questions from the board?
Just a statement, because you mentioned this already, but I, I think it's, it's so important to highlight the process again. I, I think that was your, like, second to last, third to last slide, but the fact that parents and students are always a part of this process, that the, the IEP team decision is not done in isolation. It is, it includes our parents, it includes our students to make the decision that's best for that student. So I think that is something that, you know, maybe people hear, and it goes through one ear and out the other, or they don't hear, so I would like to, to state that again, because I think that's critical to the process. So thank you for highlighting that. And Jamie, congratulations on your excellence award.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome. And of course, the pictures or the light doesn't do the, the pictures justice, so I'm glad that you mentioned that it's going to be on the website, so you can actually see and, and get a feel of how much was poured into creating that space. And, and so that's, I just want to state that. So thank you all for doing this.
Pat?
So first, I wanted, Monique took part of what I wanted to say, but I do want to just reinforce that the importance of this being very individualized and, and through conversation and teamwork to figure out what's best for the students, so I think that's really important. But I also really, we, we had an opportunity to tour tonight and talk a little bit as we did so, and I, I just want to really emphasize that while there are many good programs around the area that we use and students of ours benefit from, I love that it's ETHS and our philosophy of how we educate children, how we treat children, how we integrate them and make them feel a part of, of the community, of the ETHS community and then broader. And so I just, I, I'm, I feel that's very important. Not every student can do this day school, this isn't appropriate for every student, but for those students it is appropriate for, I think it adds a layer of, you're, you're more integrated at ETHS and the philosophy of inclusion and what that really means here, because we have a very different, and I would argue very robust definition of what that is. And I just feel like I saw that in the, in the space and in the conversation tonight. So I'm just really excited about the work that you all have done, and thank you all, and, and you've only just begun, you have no students yet, so it'll, it'll, it'll only increase for you, but that's really important. We, we've done a lot here about what it means to be a Wild Kit in all ways, and the, the importance of support and student climate and culture is so important. And, and I really feel like you've, you've brought that with you, two, three blocks, wherever, however many blocks away, so thank you, that's very, very, very good work, thank you.
Liz?
Um, yes, I was wondering, how will you determine appropriate candidates as far as the diversity of need amongst the students and how they might interact with each other and function as a, as their community within the school? I know you're going to have small classrooms, but as far as building their community and making sure that their, their needs can be met in a complimentary manner in the school? Do you have specific ideas of what kind of students you think would be like the ideal student for this school?
Yeah, so I can speak on that. As, as we had talked about in the presentation, it really all starts with the student IEP and the, the needs listed in the student IEP. So, so as teams talk about how students are functioning, not only academically, but in terms of social-emotional interpersonal skills, all of that goes into that discussion. The goals that students are working on, as well as their accommodations and related services, are all a major part of deciding who might be appropriate to support within our setting. So there is no set profile, so to speak, of student that we're looking at, but we are being very planful and mindful of who we're even considering for the programming. It, it doesn't do us well, it doesn't do the students well if we don't believe that we can implement that IEP well in our setting. So the short answer is no, there's no set profile necessarily, but it's all based on how a student's functioning currently and what's listed in that IEP.
I do know how, how complicated the conversations can be around supporting students and, and I also understand that you have had lots of conversations about these students over the years, because they are very unique and they're, they're complicated, and, and it's important to take the time to really think through each individual student and what, what their needs are. I think I heard someone, one of you say, very appropriately, that this program isn't for everybody. So it is, it's, it's a unique program, it's a, it's a great opportunity, but it's not for everybody. So, so I, I commend you to try to figure out and discern which students and families can be best, can make use of this program, and then taking it to them and taking the time to give them a tour and to answer their questions and to really spend the time helping them think this through as well. So there's a lot, there's a lot in the, in the start of this. One question that I was wondering, as I was thinking about a similar program that I'm pretty familiar with, it takes a lot of staff time to collaborate and to talk and to meet, and it's great that you have this time upfront to do that, but once it gets started, have you, have you, I'm sure you probably have thought about when that's going to happen and how that's going to continue to happen, because that collaboration is really important.
Yes, we, we have. So our schedule allows for two blocks, a morning block for AM support for students and an afternoon block for PM support for students. Now, PM support is after dismissal, however, that time is still available for students who participate in activities at the main campus. So there's staff still on duty to work with those students if they decide to stay and participate in PM support. But even after that, our staff day doesn't end until four o'clock. So when school dismisses on the main campus at three-thirty, our staff have an extra half hour built into every single day for collaboration to do the things that you are talking about.
Okay, great, thank you. And I think I wanted to add too that, as Jamie mentioned, about sixty percent of the staff has previous day school experience, so we've worked in similar settings and we know what the value is and, and the necessity for that meeting time, not only for staff to meet as a community, but to have problem-solving sessions for students, as well as other issues that are coming up that we need to work on.
Great. And then, one last thing that I would add with regard to student problem solving, Jamie and myself have started working out a regular standing schedule for, for student problem solving that will rotate on an ongoing basis between flagging students in need of new interventions, to progress monitoring students who have interventions in place, to looking at the school-wide data and determining what trends we're seeing across the whole building, and then repeating on a monthly basis. So those structures, with the time allotted in the schedule, will be built in for staff.
Right, great, okay, thank you.
I have a question about the PBIS. As far as, if you will be serving students with the high emotional needs and possibly autism, I know that, my understanding of PBIS is that, that students with those disabilities don't always respond to PBIS enforcements, and I was wondering if you have like a specific plan for students with those needs who maybe just don't respond to that type of behavioral, motivational structuring?
Yeah, so the, there are a couple of core components with PBIS that will be implemented in full at the day school. The explicit teaching and practice for all of our social-emotional skills, as well as behavioral expectations, a system of reinforcements that you're referring to in your question that will be individualized based on student interest and motivation. The bigger part about PBIS, though, is setting up systems to support staff in supporting students, so giving them consistent training for how to interact, how to build relationships, how to provide the continuum of supports as those needs arise during the school day. PBIS is the universal level of programming, so with any system of supports in a school, we would only expect that a chunk of students would respond to that base level of programming, we're shooting for eighty percent. The other twenty percent of the students roughly in the building, we have the capacity through student problem solving to develop targeted tier-two and tier-three level interventions, again, based on student need, which we'll know more about once we get in there and get up and running.
Other questions? So I'm pretty excited, I'm really glad I had a chance to see it. It really, really made it come real and alive, it's, it's a beautiful facility, and I like the way it's laid out. I think it's really gonna provide some really good support for the group of students who will be there, so, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you so much.
Are they a great team?
Yes, awesome. All right. Looks like my computer completely turned off. Okay, so where are we? Yes, all right. So our next item is comments from the public. Dr. Beavis, do we have comments from the public?
Yes, we have two comments from the public this evening. The first is Barb Miles, and this is a reminder that public comment is three minutes. I time it with my phone, when the bell goes off, it will fumble with the phone and I will ask you to complete your. When the bell goes off, it will fumble with the phone and I will ask you to complete your sentence. So I'll start it, when you start, I'll start.
Excellent. Well, thank you. As indicated, my name is Barb Miles and I'm here in respect to the fact that I have a rising junior who hopefully and most likely will be part of the day school. And I just wanted to tell you a little bit about my story. My son is emotional in his situation and he has been at the San Nishankman Orthogenic School for the last three years. He has now gotten to a point where he can take off that cast and start learning in a more open environment and we are very excited about this new school. He is looking in particular, he's looking forward to having local friends. Some of his friends currently are as far away as California. He's really looking forward to integrating with the community. There's opportunities that he just has not been able to have, that he will have as part of ETHS. And he's also looking forward to being close to home. He currently gets up very early in the morning to go to the day school down in Hyde Park. So, we're very excited about it. The process has been incredible. It's been very open. My son has been very much a participant in it and I think in some ways he was more convinced to come here before I was convinced because I like that security blanket of what I know and coming into a place that's new is kind of, it makes you nervous. And I will say, I'll just finish up real quickly, I will say one of the things he's very much looking forward to is the coding club. So, you may see him presenting because he is definitely into that. So, I don't know how much more time, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stephanie Kimmel.
Thank you, Ms. Savage-Williams, Dr. Witherspoon, members of the board. I'm also here to address the plans for the day school. I continue to be perplexed about how this has rolled out as a community member who's been following it relatively closely. For example, the memo in the packet today was extremely underwhelming considering that it's all information that had been shared previously and if this committee has been meeting since March of 2017, it was a little perplexing to me. I'm glad there was additional information shared today. Glad to hear that finally shared that there will actually be therapeutic services offered. I didn't here mention who would be delivering those services. It doesn't sound like, it did not appear from the list that there's a social worker on the staff and I continue to be concerned that, how a school like this would be able to operate without a social worker on staff. I haven't since only heard about the PBIS today, I haven't had time to research how that relates to serving kids with emotional disabilities and autism. Ms. Rolowitz asked a question about it, so I'm hoping that that answer is a good one. But my biggest concern that I still have is, I recall from when I attended ETHS that the school was built to house up to 6,000 students. I know we have about 3,500 now. I've heard Dr. Witherspoon boast that, and read on the website, et cetera, that ETHS has 1.2 million square feet here, largest public high school under one roof in the country. Why are we locating this school that, in a business district, blocks away from all of the amazing facilities that we have here? If this is such a good idea, why not embrace it and locate it here on campus like they do at New Trier and other schools? I just find it incredulous that we can't find a space for this few number of kids on our campus. Also, I'm concerned that a budget for the school has not been made public. I have requested it through FOIA and not received it. The board should be asking about the budget for the school. It's set to open in June and if there's no budget approved, that seems problematic as well. So I think it's incumbent on the board to continue to ask these questions and do what's best for our students who most need the individualized support. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment for this evening.
Thank you. All right. So next item is FOIA. I believe we have one in the packet. Dr. Beavis, correct?
Yes, we have FOIA from Noonan and the response is in your packet.
Okay, great. Board committee reports. I don't know that we have any. Okay, all right. I know that the board is sort of reorganizing and appointing committee members, so I'll be in touch with board members and we'll get that going in the next few weeks. All right, so student board report echo. It's my favorite part of the meeting site.
Hi, I'm very excited to serve as student representative for the following year. So I guess I'll start by saying that it's the time of year where students are officially wearing shorts when it's not quite shorts weather. So that means people's energy is getting higher and they're ready to be, they're ready to be at beaches and not classes. But we have a few speed bumps before we get to that summer break. So right now, we're in AP tests. Just this past weekend, I believe there was a Wildkit Academy where students use that for AP review sessions, clearing detentions and getting face time with teachers. And I know that a lot of students taking AP tests have really utilized this to like have those study sessions. And as we celebrate all the students who are participating in AP tests, I think a lot of students are also talking about the students and the student body that aren't necessarily represented in these classes. And I think that we're doing a good job and a lot of students have talked about how we're seeing more diversity in our AP classes and more students are excited to see that continue to grow. Seniors are getting ready to leave and so a lot of finals for the upperclassmen are happening right now too. But the freshmen and sophomores have the bulk of their finals actually during finals week. And so there's kind of a shift in who's really engaged in classes right now and who's kind of disconnecting. And then finally, sports are also coming to an end. So, a lot of sports are getting into like playoff seasons and things like that. Talking about playoff seasons, girls' track has come to me and talked about how next year for prom, it's scheduled the same time as track, as the state track events. And so those girls are unable to go to their senior prom next year. And I know they talked with Dr. Campbell about getting to go this year to prom. But I think students have talked about how this is a greater symptom of, I think, what a lot of students have noticed in that there is an emphasis on male sports, but more specifically football and basketball. And a lot of talk came after the basketball parades where we celebrated the basketball team, which was really amazing when they went to state or when they went to the final four and things like that. And students are excited and interested in seeing more embracing and engagement of other sports and activities. And I think the thing that defines ETHS is that students have identified this and are actually doing that. And so students have created social media accounts that celebrate specifically girl sports. And also, a group of students are looking to create a club for sports equity. And so it's kind of like Blue Crew where they go and support the teams and cheer on the sports teams, but then they would also be supporting the more marginalized sports, women's sports and other sports that don't get as much face time. And so I think that this opportunity where people are seeing something where it's not quite equal, or students are taking it into their own hands and are really taking some cool action to make that change. Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Awesome.
And I'll give a little encouragement to our students. One way to show that support is show up. The crowds at those competitions are often, sometimes Dr. Campbell and I are the only two there. So I think another way students can do it is speak with their actions and speak with their feet and actually come to those events because I think they would really love them if they were actually there cheering the teams on. And I'm ready with my report.
You can go.
So we had our annual teacher excellence awards this year. This is actually where teachers themselves nominate and choose colleagues to recognize each year, so a very special presentation to say the least. And this year, we want to congratulate Mary Theresa Reed from our Fine Arts Department, vocal music actually, Jamie Reinhardt, who was here tonight, from our Special Education Department, and John Michelson from our Math Department, who were chosen for this year's Teacher Excellence Awards by their peers. And it was a wonderful celebration that we have every year up in the terrace and this was just as exciting as it could be. We also tomorrow night have the ETHS Jazz Big Band Concert. It'll be held on, well, tomorrow night, Tuesday, May 14th, in the auditorium and that's always a great event, so I'll highlight that for folks. The band concert, the final one of the year, will be Thursday. That'll be May 16th in the auditorium. The Spring Choral Concert, that'll be next Tuesday, the 21st, in the auditorium. And as tradition continues, the Orchestra Concert will be Thursday, May 23rd. Why I say tradition, every year that is held the night of the seniors' last day. So they celebrate their big, wow, we're out of here and then they come back and have a concert that night. But somehow, it always works out beautifully and it's a great event. The Fine Arts Department will be presenting the Short Play Festival. We used to call it the June Festival, but now it'll be May 23rd to 24th. So I guess it'll be the June Festival in May. But that's in the upstairs theater and those productions are 7:30 each evening. And also, Fan, the Family Action Network, is sponsoring. Author Emily Brazelon this coming, or I'm sorry, next Monday, a week from tonight, May 20th, and that's at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. There are just a few other things going on at the end of the school year and these are maybe worth noting that all families need to be sure that they settle their ETHS accounts and fee balances by Thursday, May 23rd. Always an important date and Mary's office is always very busy getting that done. And here are the big ones. Last Day for Seniors is indeed next Thursday, May 23rd. The class of 2019 will be graduating on Sunday, June 2nd. We're back in Evanston at the West Ryan Arena at Northwestern University and there are details on the Senior Central page. I think a lot of senior families are well attuned to that right now, but others who have an interest in activities and classmates and friends can check that out for those dates and times. I thought Echo did a great job of summing up what the end of the school year looks like. And indeed, final exams will be June 3rd through the 6th. We have a makeup day then on the 7th. We will return on Monday, the 10th because of that darn polar vortex. It is an abbreviated day where students go through a very abbreviated schedule, they can, you know, touch base with their teachers and now the final exams are over, get their grades if they haven't seen them yet. And then we will have end of school year activities for the faculty and staff following that. Board members, I'll be getting word out to you, but if you want to join us for the, not attending classes, but for the end of the year staff activities on that day, on Monday, June 10th. You're always invited. We always have a big program in the auditorium when everything else is done and we honor our retirees who will be leaving us and a celebration of the school year. So I'll get word out to you, but that's on Monday, the 10th. And I'm talking about the end of the school year.
You are.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. All right. Okay, so we are now at action items. Item number 13. So I will need a motion and a second for all of these. So the first item is correction to the 2019-20 board meeting schedule and that's in your packet. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Livingston?
Yes.
Montal?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rolowitz?
Yes.
Teteric?
Yes.
Savage-Williams?
Yes, thank you. Approval of list of hearing officers and that was also in our packet.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
I have a, just a question, comment, or point of discussion on that one. I have some concerns about making a move to appoint a hearing officer for stu-, you know, I'm not exactly sure what the motion here is for, if it's a general appointment, if we're appointing only for expulsions or for suspensions or what. I think we need a little clarity around the motion, I guess, in the first instance. Secondly, I have some substantive concerns about making that kind of an appointment and I previously raised those with Dr. Witherspoon when we had some issues attempting to schedule an expulsion hearing recently. And then thirdly, I would prefer that we handle a motion of this significance where the board is delegating its responsibilities to oversee an aspect of student discipline when we have the full board here. And I know that Jude is missing today and I don't purport to speak for him, I have no idea what his feelings are in this, but I think it's important that if we're going to delegate this kind of responsibility, that we do it as a full board. So my preference would be to postpone a vote on the motion in any event. But on the substance of this, I just want, especially our new board members and the public generally, to be aware of the fact that Illinois state law contains very explicit provisions relating to student discipline. And the language in the state law delegates that responsibility of expulsion, suspension and expulsion to the board, to the school board. The school board also has the option under state law of making, delegating that responsibility to an outside hearing officer who hears the evidence and then refers its findings and recommendations to the school board and then the school board can vote on it. The reason this item is on our agenda is because we can't take those recommendations from a hearing officer unless we first approve the appointment of the hearing officer. I have some issues, as I've just laid out, about delegating that, I think, very significant responsibility. In the 10 years that I've been on the board, I've only been asked to preside over an expulsion hearing once, perhaps twice. I'm not entirely sure about that and we could dig up the exact, but it's almost never. So I don't think that this is a burden that, you know, is difficult for our school board to take on and I want to, you know, make that clear. I take it pretty seriously. Secondly, I have just seen the resumes of the two proposed hearing officers, which I think are designated as confidential, haven't been made available to the public. So the public gets to vote on school board members and you're fully vetted, they see your biographies, they listen to your points of view in public forums. But we are essentially keeping under wraps the background of hearing officers who would be called upon to preside over student discipline matters. And I have a little trouble with that. And to be honest, even though I've seen their resume in this packet, there's not enough information there for me to make up my mind about whether I want to vote to support those people to make these kinds of decisions. So I just, I'm sorry, I feel like I've covered a lot of topics in my remarks here, but I wanted to get them on the record. I would prefer that we postpone this vote to a meeting when the full board can be here, including Jude, and we can fully digest, for those of you who may be looking at me thinking, what are you, you know, what's this all about? And then we could have a vote and, you know, obviously the vote of the board is what it is. And if we have to vote tonight, you can probably gather that my vote will be a no.
Pat, my understanding, and I'm sort of asking a question while trying to sort of answer part of Gretchen's concern, my understanding is we're not abdicating to the hearing officers, that we will still always do this, but that there are also limitations on timing when, if, for example, it was a situation of a student expulsion and there has to be a meeting at a certain date and time. And this came up because we couldn't get a quorum of the board within the legal timeframe. So my understanding, and again, it's both a comment and a question because I want to make sure I'm right, is that we aren't abdicating. It's just in the event that there has to be, within, you know, a 48-hour period, a meeting and we cannot convene a quorum and therefore not do it within the legal time constraints, we would then and only then use a hearing officer. That was, that's my understanding.
That is, that is exactly correct. And I think what you're referring to is a recent attempt on our part to get a quorum and after many, many attempts, we just couldn't figure out how we could get four- and after many, many attempts, we just couldn't figure out how we could get four people to meet at the same time. So I don't see this at all as we are giving this responsibility up. I, too, take it very seriously. This is a major part of our responsibility. I think I've been involved in two or three of these as well, so I don't think they come up very often, but I think when they do, they're important for us to do.
Can I, Eric, before, I know you want to jump in. So there have been several times this year that we haven't been able, because it's been my, that's been my understanding, too. And there's been several times that the board, who is responsible for responding to this, have not been available to do so. And so what we've done is held up the process.
I'm only aware of one.
Or created, no, I mean, we've tried several times.
I would love to know all those times.
And let me finish. Let me finish. Because I didn't interrupt you. And so we've tried several times to, I know Lisa and Eric have really tried. They've called us, they've sent out several emails, they have called us again, they have said, Monique, can you change this in order to accommodate this? Can you come earlier? Can you? So I know that I've been approached more than once and during this term of being on the board, it's happened, unfortunately, because I don't like the state that this is being created in, but it's happened more than not. And so I feel like if we are being responsible, then we need to address an issue that continues to be one so that we don't hold up the process of what the right is for the students and what the administration needs to do in order to handle the situation at hand. So that has been my understanding. It was communicated that this is an option. This is not the first time we heard about this. We knew that this was an option and so it's being presented to us. So I don't want it to ever sound like this is the first time the board has heard about this, maybe for the newer board members this is, but for those that have been on this board, we knew that the hearing officers were an option to deal with the issue that the board members could not find time to address this.
Thank you. I think you've all laid it out well. Actually, I do recommend that you pass this tonight, even though there's no obligation that you may ever have to use these hearing officers. I'm actually responding to Ms. Livingston's pointing out to me that our board policy points out that the board needs to have approved hearing officers. So I actually brought this to the board because you had brought up to me that we needed to have that. This is common practice in our neighboring school districts. In fact, in many of our neighboring school districts, the board never actually hears a case. They have a trained professional hearing officer hear it, who then writes a full report to the board, but the board doesn't abdicate. The decision is the board's. You get the report, you get the recommendation, and then the board has to make the vote. The hearing officer cannot make that legal decision, can only hear it and recommend it. I don't anticipate when it may ever be needed here, but we have been having difficulty getting quorums. And once you initiate an expulsion, and it is only expulsions, not suspensions, a hearing is required and you do have only like 10 days to have the hearing. Plus, in order to send the official notification that has to go out right away, you must state in that letter when the hearing will be. So we have a very tight window to establish quorum and if we don't, then we fail to send the legal document in time. Again, we've hardly ever had an expulsion hearing since I've been here. We've had a few times where it looked as if we would need one and then, you know, through the attorneys and other legal matters, it gets resolved and it's not needed. But when it is required, for example, we had none this year, but we had several come up.
Yes.
And we were having a very difficult getting a quorum. So I need your help that we have a, and it's in your board policy, we're not making it up. It's not only in state law, it's in your board policy. And so what we're asking you to do is simply give us an approval so that if we ever get in a bind like that, we can meet the legal requirements and again, you will have the ultimate decision. But it's only a fallback and it would only be in consultation with the board president if it were decided that we're going to have to appoint a hearing officer for that particular one to meet the legal timeline. That's my recommendation.
So I'm going to call, there's a motion on the table that's been seconded, so I'm going to call.
Can I just get some clarity around what the motion is? The motion is?
Yes, I'm recommending and asking for a motion to approve these two individuals, that they would be pre-approved hearing officers in the event that they were needed.
In the event that they were needed.
Oh, yeah. And that's in your board policy.
That is.
And obviously, they're not, you know, just, I want to be crystal clear what exactly we're approving. We're not approving both of them to oversee a single expulsion. So there's, but approving them for the superintendent to appoint one or the other in the event you haven't, after a certain number of tries, been in touch with our board to get a quorum to first serve. I'm assuming that we are still, in the first instance, going to attempt to convene our board members to conduct the hearing and in the event you cannot muster a quorum, you will then be appointing one or the other, but not both of these attorneys. Is that?
That's correct.
I just think the motion needs to be very, very clear.
Okay.
If that's what it is.
That is what it is. That hasn't changed. That's consistent with the policy and that's what we've done. That's what got us to this point.
The policy doesn't say that. I mean, neither the law or policy says it. What the law and the policy says is that the board will conduct an, the board or a hearing officer appointed by the board shall conduct the expulsion hearing. So I'm just trying to get clarity around what we're trying to accomplish in the motion.
So what we're trying to accomplish is to have these two individuals approved as hearing officers in the event that we cannot pull together enough board members to establish a quorum. The first go-to for us would be to have board members serve that role, which is what we tried to do several times and that didn't work. So given the time restraints and how important it is to get this done and to have a date as quickly as possible, this serves as a backup if we need that. So that is the motion. Okay. I'm going to call for a vote.
Did you get a motion, a second?
I did.
Okay, I'm sorry. I lost track.
So who?
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, it was discussion after.
Yeah, that's right.
Did we? Okay, we got a motion.
Are there a question?
Yes.
Yes.
Rowlowitz?
Yes.
DeTerry?
Yes.
Livingston?
No.
Savage-Woolley?
Yes. Okay, the motion passed. The next item is the consent agenda and that includes approval of change of order for laser field turf replacement, approval of equipment purchase for Wildkid Wellness and Performance Center, approval of prevailing wage resolution, approval of IASB membership, approval of minutes from April 29, 2019, regular meeting, treasurer's report from March 2019, approval of bills, personnel agenda, which consists of appointments to staff, certified, safety and summer school, change in status, stipend, leave of absence, maternity, certified, resignation, certified, retirements, certified, and an addendum, which includes appointment to staff, coach. So can we have a motion and second, please?
Move for approval.
Roll call, please.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rowlowitz?
Yes.
DeTerry?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Monsell?
Yes.
Savage-Woolley?
Yes, thank you. Okay, we are at old business. Is there any old or new business to present? Okay, so in closing, polling of the board, does anybody have anything you'd like to share?
I just wanted to welcome our new school board members, both our student rep and our two new adult reps, since I managed to miss the last meeting. So welcome.
Thank you.
And I also want to say that last week, it's a little bit late, but last week was Teacher Appreciation Week here and it was a week of pretty incredible, amazing activities. I got to kind of jump in on the board breakfast on Wednesday. It was very exciting and just.
Very nice.
Really good, positive energy, which I guess was in place the entire week, so. Yeah.
Overload, yeah.
Yeah, some of the activities were great. So it is my feeling that everyone who works at ETHS is a teacher because everyone is teaching and instructing students. So, yes, thank you. Thank you. I certainly appreciate the staff. And with that, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.